Hi, my name is Robert O'Leary. I'm here to tell everybody to rise with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, against evil, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a claimant at notice?
In accordance with the Open Public Readings Act, Chapter 231, a notice of reading has been provided as follows: On January 12th and July 12th, 2017, notice was sent to the Home and Tribune, Star Ledger, local source, and the Clerk of the municipality. By statement, there is no smoking permit in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education will discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the sunshine rule.
I go.
Ms. Slater?
Here.
Mr. Tapoleski?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Here.
Mr. Worab?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Baviana?
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Colvis?
Here.
Move for approval of the minutes of the last meeting. So move.
Second.
Roll.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Tapoleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Worab?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain any comments from the public. Agenda items only. Please come to the podium if anybody wishes to come up. Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our reports. At this time, do you want to give a superintendent or the attending?
No, I don't work for the season.
Okay, Dr. Robotosi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. We've had a successful opening to the 2017-18 school year. Just wanted to remind our parents and the community members that our back-to-school nights are in full effect. We've had the high school last night, which was, by all accounts, very successful, and the rest of our schools will be forthcoming. I strongly encourage our parents to make the time to attend back-to-school nights with their teachers and staff and learn about all of our programs and offerings. I'd also like to remind the public and our students and parents, and our students remember, but this Thursday, schools are closed for Rosh Hashanah. Also, being in the audience tonight, we have a new thing that's going to be at every board meeting which was created by our Public Information Officer called Good News Linden, which just is a little bit of summary of some of the good stuff that's happening in our district, you know, throughout the park, and we're going to highlight these things at our board meeting. If you've had a chance to take a look at our website, our Facebook page, and our Twitter accounts, we're trying to expand the coverage of all of the great things that we have going on in the district, and I think it's quite evident that we've always had these things going on, but we just want to get the word out there that we have these amazing things going on. So if you've got a chance, pick this up, read what's going on. I want to highlight one story which I thought was really great, really, to me, represented what Linden is all about. Is it that one of our high school custodians who won a full scholarship to the University of Phoenix? Last year, one of our history teachers, Monica Gonzalez, was named the Union County Teacher of the Year, and she was runner-up for State Teacher of the Year. In that position, she had the opportunity to nominate anyone she wanted to the University of Phoenix for a four-year scholarship. Through her work at the high school, working with one of our custodians, Gerard Peel, she found him to be engaging. She loved the way he interacted with our students, and she would often have conversations with him about becoming a teacher. So she ended up nominating Mr. Peel for the scholarship. He was selected, and he won a four-year scholarship to the University of Phoenix where he was going to study to become a teacher. And I think it's just a great story, and it really just shows where our family, where our community is all about looking out for one another. So if you've got a chance, pick that up and read that. Mr. Colvis, that concludes my report tonight.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to curriculum instruction. Mr. Yaddo isn't here, so I'll call upon Mr. Burge to review the report.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are forty items under curriculum instruction for approval. Items 1 through 9 deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payments for related services, adjustments to tuition as per NJ DOE audits, the approval of services from the NJ Commission for the Blind and Visually Ape, the continuation of established resource and self-contained classes and transportation for students. Item 10 grants approval for Rutgers University to gather follow-up data from the Linden School District for the NJ Autism Study. Items 11, 12, and 13 approve home instruction services for students enrolled in specialized placement programs. Item 14 amends board action on past CNI reports. Item 15 authorizes curriculum writing. Item 16 grants permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item 17 approves district field trips. Items 18, 19, 20, 33, and 40 approve training for district staff. Item 21 approves professional development activities. Item 22 approves courses through EduCare for 12th grade students. Items 23 and 24 grant permission for various Linden High School groups to participate in a Linden Halloween parade. Item 25 grants approval for the Kane Conservatory of Music to perform at Linden High School. Items 26 grant permissions for Linden High School chemistry students to participate in KAN Expo at Liberty Center. Item 27 grants approval for all elementary schools to participate in the K Kids World Cadon on Halloween. Item 28 grants approval for a delayed start at Linden High School due to PSAT testing. Item 29 approves the school's self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act for all Linden public schools. Item 30 grants permission to apply for a supplemental grant for the 21st Century Community Learning Center. Item 31 approves SAD system training sessions. Item 32 approves the use of safe sports training consultants for first aid, CPR, AED training for staff. Item 34 is a resolution to retire Muhammad Will Pearson's football jersey at Homecoming 2017. Item 35 approves designation of Linden High School District as a model district for the NJEA Priority Schools Initiative. Item 36 proclaims October as National Bullying Prevention Month. Item 37 proclaims the week of October 2nd through the 6th as Week of Respect. Item 38 proclaims the week of October 16th through the 20th as School Violence Awareness Week. Item 39 proclaims the month of October as National Principals Month. Mr. President, I move curriculum instruction items 1 through 40, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Go.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Tapoleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Worab?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes, worab number 18, Rose Lee Colvis. Okay, at this time, we'll move into management operations. Mr. Tapoleski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Management Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, present the following 24 items to the Board of Education for approval. Item 1 is to amend board action on past management operation reports as listed. Item 2 is to accept the following resignations. Item 3 is to appoint following staff for the 1718 school year. Item 4 is to approve transfer of following staff for the 1718 school year effective 9/2017. Item 5 is to approve the transfer of following staff for 2017-18 school year effective 9/25. Item 6 is to approve the following leave of absence. Item 7 is comp state staff listed for unused vacation time and sick days upon retirement as pre-negotiated contract. Items 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 21, 22, 23, and 24 are to appoint the following staff for various positions at various schools. Item 18 is to authorize superintendent to sign the 1718 Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials as required by NJAC 6A:16-62B. Item 20 is approved payment to Samso, Micro Samso, in the amount of $500 for use of his CDL license for the 1718 school year. It's 25, which I just noticed. Dr. Robotosi, you will address item 25.
Thank you. Let me first address, Mr. Tapoleski, that the actual agenda item, that we found an error. It states that she was a member of the Board of Education. It should read that she worked for the Board of Education. Kathleen Melick, who worked for the Board of Education for nine years, starting her career in 1983 as a secretary at School 10 till her retirement in 1990, would like to offer our condolences to her family during their time of loss. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move management operations items 1 through 25, and respectfully request a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Tapoleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Worab?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes, worab, item 11, Diane Colvis. Okay, next, we have support operations. Mr. Alvarez?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Support Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and the Division of Administration, reports secretary for sense of following motions to Linden Morification for Approval. Item 1, 3, and the monthly board business for approval. Item 9 is amendment of past board action. Item 10 to 14, accepting funds as follows: $10,000 from Rutgers Computer Systems Institute, $25,000 for Grand Energy Services, $50.34 from Jobstons Inc., $40,000 from the State of New Jersey Provision Administration, $56,598 from the New Jersey Department of Education for Chapter 192 Services, $80,676 from the New Jersey Department of Education for Chapter 193 Services. Item 15 is payment for the inspection of the bus supply pressure system as listed. Item 16 and 17 approve the change orders for asbestos abatement at School Number 6 as listed. Item 18 is to approve a resolution in accordance with NJAC 6A for attendance at a state conference from police and board members as listed. Item 19 is approval of out-of-district students to attend Linden public schools as listed. Item 20 is to declare the items listed as surplus and to dispose of same. Item 21 is the approval to purchase athletic supplies and equipment for winter sports for the DOD 1718 teams as listed. In facilities, item 1 amendment, sorry, item number 1 is to amend action previously taken, and two to six are to approve the use of facilities for following: Tracy Birch, Board Vice President, parent EST meetings; Dr. Robotosi, Superintendent of Schools, for chats through the superintendent; Dee Preston, Principal School Number 1, for the harvest festival; C. Acting, President School Number 9, PTA, as listed; and C. produced, Athletic Director, St. John's Athletic Associations as listed. Mr. President, I move by this items 1 to 21, and facilities, items 1 through 6, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Tapoleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Worab?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to planning and policy. Mr. Worab?
The Planning and Policy Committee submits policies for first and second reading to incorporate new features provided by code-in-law and to elaborate on these local district policies. For first reading, 3510, Operation and Maintenance of Plan. This policy has minor edits and a new section on safe drinking water. 3516, Safety. The policy was revised to add a section on safe drinking water. 5141.4, Missing, Abuse, and Neglected Children. Revised to provide more details on due process when allegations are found to be true. And for a second reading, 3542.2, School Meal Program Areas. This policy governs the regulations regarding the payment of cafeteria bills that are in areas. Mr. President, I move for the first reading and second reading, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Tapoleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Worab?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we'll move on to our reports and special committee delegates. We have our state delegate, Mr. Tapoleski?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you may know, the state is very active in making sure that they're up on what the, sorry, the state legislature does, and to that end, on September 6th, what was the kickoff date? Was it the 6th?
Yes, sir.
On September 6th, in the afternoon, I met with Assemblyman Jim Kennedy in Broadway, along with Chris Jones, one of the members of our state association, to talk about some of the things that were going on, some of our concerns with legislation. I would just like to remind everyone that the entire state legislature is up for election in November. So we will have a new governor. We will have new legislators, a lot of, a large number of experienced legislators have decided not to run, and so they're going to be replaced too. So it's always nice to speak with someone that probably will get back in and put our thought in air. Additionally, on the 10th, this Saturday, I met down in Trenton with our new, what is it? I'm trying to think what it's called. We met to, the new plan for...
Strategic plan?
The strategic plan? New strategic plan, thank you. I thought I typed it down here, and I didn't. Our new strategic plan, that was an all-day affair that let out around 1:30. It was interesting. I had done it once before, and part of my experience is what led us. Dr. Robotosi had mentioned it to me, and I had mentioned to him that I felt a linchance to that, and the only difference is the state's plan is only three years long, as opposed to ours, which is five. Then, this past Saturday, we had our new legislative, I mean, I'll hear it, that's why I...
I have it all fine.
Oops. On the 16th, I had a meeting again, from 8:00 morning till about 1:30 down in Trenton. Dan Sinclair, our new president, made comments on the strategic plan meeting. They started a new group on the non-college-bound student, and I believe I've been named to that group. And he talked about the training and leadership training, of which he mentioned at the county meeting also, about a training weekend for leaders that will probably have it sometime in May. The regular reports, Ray Penny interviewed, who is the county coordinator and also does well, a lot of the PR for school boards, interviewed both presidential candidates, not presidential, gubernatorial candidates, and those interviews will be posted online. The DOE update had to do with ESSA, which is a new federal law concerning education. New Jersey's plan is approved. CUSAC is going to be adjusted to meet the plan, but the adjustments for the CUSAC will not go into effect until the 18, 19 school year. There will be new support and accountability offices throughout the state. The State Board of Education met, and two of the new board members on the state board are local board members. So hopefully, they might have a little bit more influence on how rulings of the state board affect us. And after that, I met with, the afternoon group, we met with the legislative group, the subcommittee for planning and policy for our, the state records. There are three proposals that were presented for the delegate assembly in November. We moved two of them forward, and we decided not to advance one of them because our policies already cover all the information that occurred there. The two that they moved forward, one came from Middletown, which had to do with how a lot of boards of education were affected by the change in funding after the funding numbers had already gone out. And so our proposal is simply that, once the numbers go out, don't reduce anybody. You want to give them more money, fine, just don't cut money out, because they've already drawn their budget based on figures, and now they have to readjust their budgets, and in some cases, districts lost more than a million dollars. So it became an issue. The other one had to do with trying to limit the increase in specialized costs for out-of-district placements to 2%, which we are helped to. So in other words, if we're sending kids out, and we can only raise our taxes 2%, and then we have a large contingent of out-of-district placements, and you decide to jump them up a lot more, that's going to affect us, and that's going to affect our regular programs. So that was that one. And then finally, the subcommittee met with a proposal that was brought forth by Edison back in May, and it was tabled, and we had to address it because it dealt with charter schools. And the problem with the language from the Edison proposal had to do with limiting, reducing the amount of, the addition of charter schools to districts that are high-performing, and how do you define high-performing? And we're all members together, charter schools are also members. So they felt, we felt at the time, but it was very controversial. It lasted for a long time back in May, the discussions. But we moved forward, and the proposal now is to just change some language in our current policy manual, which just deals with increasing the size of the charters. So once a charter already exists, that they should have to prove that they should get larger, not just rubber stamping, to be able to get larger. Although, depending on who the governor becomes, it may be a moot point. That concludes my report. Sorry, I'm so...
Now, you have a chance to talk some more. County delegate, please.
We had our meeting on the 7th. We had all the heavy hitters there. The director of school boards was there, Dr. Larry Feinsop. We had the vice president in charge of legislation there. We had the head of the legislative committee from school boards give a presentation. And then we had some superintendents that were on a panel, along with the president of the State New Jersey PTA. And one of those superintendents happened to be our very own doctor, Daniel Robotosi.
It's my pleasure to be with you.
And it was also a superintendent from Plainfield and, Springfield?
Springfield.
Springfield. It was a great program. Everybody after the program felt that it was very beneficial. So look to your dates. One good thing I just almost forgot to mention, you will have found the 1617 Legislative Agenda and Action Plan I had. This was given to us, and I had copies made, so every one of you can see what it is the school board is trying to advance when they go in to talk with legislators. What we do in the delegate assembly, and with our policy manual and stuff like that, gives them the groundwork for what they can talk about. So we try to keep our policies general so that they can go, and if there's a compromise suggestion, they can go there. If you're too specific, and the legislators don't want to follow that, then we can't support it. So that's basically what we talk about there. That concludes that. Thank you.
I have to comment, it was an interesting evening. I've gone to a number of these. They were always voted NPC's, not this time. We were voted, it was nice, and they gave some excellent speeches, including from our own Dr. Robotosi. It was a good job. Okay, at this time, we move on to Educational Services Committee, which I'm the head of. I don't think we're going to one, because I think we missed the last one, because we have the same night as a board meeting.
Same night.
Right. So somebody will be going to the next one. I don't know who yet, somebody. But we'll get somebody there, okay? They are exciting. All right, next, we have the EST preparations. Ms. Birch?
Thank you, Mr. Colvis. President Colvis. We had our parent EST meeting. It was held on Tuesday, September 12th, at the Administration Building at 6:30. Mr. Colvis, Mr. Worab, Mrs. Baviana, Mrs. Bellani, we're all in attendance, and we had parents that represented Linden High School, McManus, Soul, School 1, School 2, School 5, School 9, and School 10. It was a wonderful night. Our guest speaker for the night was Mr. Haranzetti, and he did an awesome job with his presentation of the Fine and Performing Arts here at Linden Public Schools. So we thank him for that. It was very informative, and the parents did enjoy and had lots of questions to ask. At our launch, that took place on September 6th, we brought together our family of over 1,200 administrators, teachers, and staff. There was a song that, again, many staff members, teachers, and administrators sang. It was called "Teaching With Love," and it was sung to the tune of the Broadway play of Rent, Seasons of Love. One of our parents said she just keeps playing it over and over and over again because she just loved it, and she would like to know if we could share that with the parents at the next parent EST meeting. The new lyrics were created by Mr. Cosby and Mrs. Brady, and we thank them for their amazing job with it. I know that every time I hear that song, it's very emotional, and when the words were changed to "Teaching With Love," it was even more emotional. So we had a parent that was very happy, and he spoke out about how happy he was and how sincere and accommodating Dr. Robotosi was with his concerns of his son that was diagnosed with autism, and he's looking forward to a wonderful school year with everything that's in place. Our students are looking great on the field with their new uniforms for the various sports: soccer, cheerleading, football, et cetera. So we're, get out there and see them. One of our moms expressed how happy she was that her daughter loves the STEM program and the after-care program at Soul, and she said Soul is just a family. Everyone's looking out for each other and for the community, and she said that Soul Middle School has the best teachers ever. One mom boasted about how happy her daughter is in pre-K over at School 10, and that School 10's doing some great things, and they'll be having a daddy-daughter dance, as well as a mom-you-sun dance. At School 5, the parents were amazed by the wonderful 9/11 tribute that the teachers did, and they said their teachers are always going above and beyond, and that they really do care. Parents and students said that the new auditorium at McManus looks awesome, as well as the lunchroom. They are now both nice and bright, and the addition of the TV in the cafeteria is great because the TV showcases all the events going on, as well as announcements, and anything that the clubs or activities are doing, such as if something's canceled, and the students are very appreciative for it. The principal over at Soul, some of the parents said that he was doing a very thorough job, and he explained the A and B days to the incoming 6th grade parents and students at the orientation. They were very pleased with how well he was thorough with that, and they thanked him for that. A mom, I'm not sure what school it was, I'm sorry my nose didn't... A mom, I'm not sure what school it was, I'm sorry my notes didn't reflect it, she said her child's teacher uses dojo and made the first day of school personal and cute. She was happy to be able to see what her child did on the first day of school. They had sent some pictures out to the parents. There were some concerns. There was a lot of cursing and shoving in the hallways at McManus, and the parents would like to know if maybe the staff can help out with enforcing some of the rules. A parent's concerned about some transportation for the cheerleaders from McManus to Tiger Stadium for some of the games, and her concerns are the girls' safety due to it getting dark and walking with all of their gear. The lanyards at McManus, there were some concerns from parents that they're breaking and falling apart, and they wanted to know if it was possible that we can order new ones. A mom expressed her concern in the fact that a lot of sixth-grade athletes don't meet the middle school teams, and wanted to know if we could have JV teams at the middle schools. And then there was a concern for the need of different colored folders and three and five subject notebooks. Parents wanted to know, especially because school begins and the supplies are very limited, if there is another way that we can maybe think of, maybe color coding it or something, so that every year we know what color to get. The cameras over at School Line have not been replaced yet, and there was a concern for some safety, and they said it's difficult to see who's standing at the door. One of the other concerns was the third day of school, the bathrooms had writing on the walls, and it was still not removed. Four out of the six stalls in the girls' bathroom were broken. The girls' locker room had no locks on the doors, and both sinks were broken, so they couldn't wash their hands, as well as the sinks in the bathroom on the first floor were broken too. And they said there are few mirrors in the bathrooms, and the ones that they do have are shattered. A parent expressed some concern about handwriting and learning how to write neatly, and also to write in script. After every parent EST meeting, I sit down with Dr. Robotosi, and we discuss the great things going on in the district, as well as the concerns. All the parents' names are kept confidential, unless the parent expresses otherwise. We invite you to come out to all of our meetings. We do one a month, we have a guest speaker every month, and next month, it'll be our very own Superintendent, Dr. Robotosi. So, come out and speak with the board members in an informal setting. We offer refreshments, and possibly at the next meeting, you will get to see some of the highlights of the launch. Our next meeting will be October 10th, and that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. EST were high school?
High school. We held our meeting, the student EST, at the High School Media Center on September 12th at 1:00 PM. In attendance was Mr. Pikidi, the advisor. We had three sophomores, four juniors, and three seniors. At our next meeting, we will have the freshmen attend with us. We welcomed the students back, and they were very eager to start to discuss some of the topics that were going on. The first student spoke out, and I quote, these were his words, "The French fries are astonishing," which is using to our ears, because there were some issues last year with the French fries all year long, and he just raved about how astonishing the French fries are, you know, how good they are this year. So, hopefully, it keeps up, and we thank October Union, and hope they keep up the good work. We now have a spin room at Linden High School. As some of you don't know what a spin room is, it's not to be confused with the area where reporters can speak with debate candidates. I never knew that that was, what that room was called for reporters, but at Linden High School, it is a spin cycling class, where the students do indoor cycling on state-of-the-art bicycles, and they're able to have awesome workouts at all different fitness levels. The students love it. They think it's the best thing. Even our ROTC students are expressing interest in utilizing it. They said it was awesome, and they can't wait, some of the students haven't used it yet, so they can't wait to get in there and use it. They noticed that the library got a facelift with new paint, and they recognized it and said it looked great. Mats, and, there were mats that were placed at various stores around the building, and the students did notice that also. They're used for wiping their feet when coming in from the rain, and they said it just makes the building feel a little more homeier and look nicer. We did discuss the new cell phone policy with the students, which they're not very fond of, but they understand why it's put into place, and they asked if all the teachers could just be consistent with it, so that it does set its tone, and the students would take it serious. Some of the students' concerns were they were not aware of a password change over the summer that the IT did, and at the end of August, it created some problems for them. Another concern is that their OneNote is not working, and it's not redirecting them to space to create or save a file. The students also expressed concern for the amount of notebooks that they have to carry, as well as books. They expressed that they have laptops, and why they can't just use the laptops, utilize their laptops as their notebooks. At the Academy Building, the students are saying they have a hard time making it to class on time, because they kind of bottlenecked at the door going in. There's only one door, and they wanted to know if maybe we can open up another door to get a better flow. The students were concerned about the bell signs. They're given some time to leave the Academy Building early, but not necessarily the main building to go across. And their last concern was the restrooms in the building. They said it's only the fourth day of school, and the bathrooms were bad. They said the first-floor bathroom had water all over the floor, and the bathroom on the second floor, there were four stalls, and only one was working. And there are no mirrors in the bathroom. And the Academy Room near Room 201, the sinks spray all over and get all of the students wet. The students said they're looking forward to all of the upcoming events that will be happening at the school, such as the pep rally, the homecoming dance, and the homecoming football game. As with every student EST meeting, I'll be sitting down with the principal, Mrs. Torrey, to address any and all concerns, as well as discuss with her all of the great things that the students love and that are taking place in the building. I'd like to thank Mrs. Torrey for supporting our meetings and being instrumental in taking care of any and all concerns that the students have. Our next meeting will be October 17th at 11:00 AM in the Student Media Center at Linden High. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do we have anything from the EST for the middle schools?
We have the middle school EST scheduled for Soul on September 26th at 9:00 AM, and we have not heard back from McManus yet.
Okay, thank you. Any unfinished business to come before the board? Okay. Do we have any board member comments for new business?
Oh, yeah, I did, I wanted to comment. We had that new information director, what is it?
Public Information Officer.
Public Information Officer. I just, over the summer, I had mentioned to him, every day during the week, school boards puts out a little daily thing on articles and stuff about different schools throughout the state. And I, I had never seen anything from Linden on. I've seen stuff from Linden at least twice in the last week, so I don't know how it got to work out, how it got there, whether it got there. I told him about it, and it's gotten on there, there was a tour, Soul was there, and the bathrooms in school four were there. So, I don't know whether it's newspaper articles that then get transferred to them, so that they can link, but it seems to be working.
It's working.
It is working.
Thank you. I have come out. Yeah, the holiday toy drive that we did last year, we're going to be doing again this year, and if any of the faculty or staff would like to be involved, or anybody from the public, because it's going to be a Linden-wide event, you can email me at awalrath@lindenps.org. And also, that a few residents were concerned with the pedestrian sign near School Eight, that it was causing some issues with potential accidents that might occur. The police have addressed it and removed the sign, and if anybody has any further concerns, to just contact the police department directly. And also, I just want to say thank you to the administration for an awesome kickoff to the school year at our third annual launch. The event was truly moving, and the speakers were excellent.
I wanted to piggyback off of attending the Union County School Boards meeting with Mr. Calvis and Ms. Birch. It was a great opportunity to see what's going on in other school systems in the county. Our Superintendent definitely represented on the panel. He discussed different forms of communication with parents, especially during conflict resolution, because we all know Linden has had quite a few conflict, conflict resolution issues that have occurred in the last couple of years, and he talked about some of the things that worked and some of the things that didn't. So, I just wanted to give him poodles for representing. I also want to commend our board member, Mr. Tapolewski, because he's the President of the Union County School Boards, and he represents us well with the county, and he also represents us really well at the state, when he, when they're with legislate, legislation putting out all the different issues that we have. So, I really want to commend him, and I'm glad that we have a board member like that on our board. I also want to commend Ms. Torrey and Ms. Lewis and their team who put together the 2017 launch. I must say, it was very inspiring. The speaker, Shalonda Silverior, was a phenomenal speaker with a powerful message that everyone was able to receive, at least one valuable nugget to inspire them to take a look at themselves, and how they can encourage and empower our children and each other. She really emphasized how we treat one another. You never know what impact you have on how you treat people and how you talk to people. She also made valid points that all our staff are essential, whether you're a janitor, a cafeteria worker, a nurse, teachers, et cetera. It takes a village. Again, I just want to commend them, because it was really a great launch. Thank you.
I was missing, not asking Mr. Marchusci if there was anything for the Special委 Est, nothing is possible. Okay, thank you very much. All right. At this time, we'll entertain any comments from the public. Please come up to the podium if you have any. Okay, seeing none, I will entertain an adjournment. So, move.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Tapolewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yep.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Marchusci?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Slov, if you have a minute, could you come down and say anything?
Thanks.